Start kind of re-engaging.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Got it, got it. If we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Zachary Hilton.
Here.
Sean Reedy.
Here.
Patrick Block.
Here.
Lionel DePaulis.
Here.
Chad Rader.
Here.
Make sure you have a form.
All right.
Today's agenda was postponed on November 2nd, November 23rd, 2012, at 9:05 a.m.
Thank you. We're gonna skip over the next ceremonial items until our awardee comes in. So as soon as he comes in, we'll fit him right in. Next up is Presentations to Commission. This is a public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. Is there anybody that would like to speak? All right, seeing none. Next up is gonna be the San Benito County Chamber of Commerce, the Pisinas Bike Event. So, but why don't both of you can come on up over here. I'll meet you down there.
I pulled up the website.
Oh, okay.
It's a, the mic you just had after like sort of. But go ahead and introduce yourselves and you guys have the floor.
All right. My name's Jennifer with the Chamber of Commerce and I'm an events coordinator. Hi, my name's Michelle Leonard and I'm the CEO of the family of many people. Thank you. So we're here to present the Discovery Classic, which is a two-part bike ride. It takes place on September the 5th and 6th. And it's an eco-friendly, go-green atmosphere. We're gonna have charging stations from Tesla, we're gonna have microbreweries and wineries and a formal table meal served at night before the event. And we have like music and the following day, it's a 60-mile gravel grinder bike ride and a 40-mile wine tour bike ride. You can pick either one of the biking adventures you would like to choose from. This is an event that we feel would be a great collaboration with the city of Doray as far as with the city of Hollister Chamber of Commerce. And. Sometimes I just think things out.
Go for it.
But the Discovery Classic Bike Ride, it originally was just a bike ride because we didn't have one. So with San Benito County, we've, and the Chamber, we have really revamped our entire business model to do more tourism and Chamber like center, like to build those two things that benefit our community and build tourism. So we took a half-day bike ride and turned it into something that can be a destination for tourists. So the ride originally started in downtown Hollister and ended in downtown Hollister. So we took it farther into South County at Pisinas Ranch. And Pisinas Ranch is all about sustainability and eco-friendly farming. Everything is grass-fed beef and just a very green business model. Right, Turkey's too. We have, under the Chamber of Commerce, we have a Green Committee. So the Green Committee all through the year works on items that are green, safe routes to school, biking with their council of governments, and promoting eco-friendly business models. So each committee was tasked with adopting an event for the community. So this was something already in the Chamber's business model. So we put the Green Committee and this event together to make it stronger, to make it a more cohesive sound for green efforts in the business community and for tourism and what the Chamber is doing for the betterment of the community. So this year, we're really excited. We took this half-day event and we're turning it into a two-day event. It will always happen on Labor Day weekend so that on holiday weekends, on a three-day weekend, your mind will think to come to San Benito County for tourism. And we are part of the Central Pedestrian Council, as is your, like Gilroy-Walkland Center. So collectively, I think this is something that will really uplift our region to really give people the opportunity to do more and see more and participate and really do things that are within the lifestyle that they want to leave. People want to be eco-friendly and they want to be green. This is a very, yeah, healthy, this is a very thoughtful way to do that and implement that into how they participate in their community recreationally.
Thank you, Zachary, for bringing us here and allowing us to talk to you a little bit about Discovery Classic. There's no timer, so I don't know if I'm.
No, no, no.
Twenty-three minutes or not.
No.
So we're really excited about this and we're, we really want to think of ways how your, because we don't have Bicycle Pedestrian Commission in our city. And we were like, that would fill the gaps. Like how can you help us to drive like people that are interested in having this experience come and register for Discovery Classic and be a part of this big event? So we're really looking also for your guidance and help with your Bicycle Commission to help us and kind of give us some ideas like, what are you looking for as a bicycle community? What are some things that we might need to fill the gaps in? Since we're revamping, this is our first year off the boat and we're really, really trying to focus on eco-friendly sustainability and going green. And it's exciting. And we would love like your input, like some ways you guys can help guide us in this. And it would be a great way to fill those gaps that I think your city's needing and our city needs as well. Any questions?
Any questions?
Me, excited to hear more about it.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, if it's.
The gravel grinder, I think, is like the big.
It is. And more and more people are looking for ways to get off the road for events and get on like gravel and dirt. So I can definitely, and I don't know of another one around the region that's consistent. So I like the consistency. I like that you guys are putting your place, like a placeholder, like every September, it will happen here. I do love the two-day event thing. I'm a big fan of Sea Otter. Me and my daughter always go down to Sea Otter just because it's, it's just, it's days and days of nothing but bike. Me and Chad spend, usually spend Sundays down there just collecting swag and all that. So I would say beyond just inviting or collaborating with like, you know, the other chambers and stuff, but really go after the big corporate sponsors. You know, which I'm sure you guys already are, but those same ones that are at Sea Otter and you can, you know, you can easily jump on the Sea Otter website and see who's there. And, you know, I would say like try to get a lot of them to come participate. Because that's something that, that people are willing to spend the money. And they're even more willing to spend the money if there's, you know, an experience to go along with it. And I'm sure you guys have heard that a lot recently.
Absolutely. That's why we're revamping, thanks, we want to make it like an event that you know in your mind every year you're gonna schedule your, your time around that weekend, knowing that this is something that you enjoy doing and that we offer something that you're really, like the Sea Otter Classic. Funny enough, the person that puts on the Sea Otter Classic is part of our committee.
So you're surrounding yourself with all the right people.
So I, I think for us, the next step is really building the partnership and building partnerships with people that want to participate and want to promote it, to see it do well, so that collectively as a region, this is something we can offer. In 2021, it will be the San Benito County Chamber of Commerce's 100-year celebration. So in our 100th year, we are adding an eccentric ride for the first time. And then moving forward, we will have the wine tour, the gravel grinder, and the eccentric ride. Because there isn't one that's close by and I'm not a baker.
Close by.
This one that we can see is full thing, right? And then after that, it's Palm Springs. So.
Actually, the Terrabella.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so. So real quick though, about two years ago, there was a gravel ride on Hollister. Was, were you connected to that one at all?
So the Chamber did the Discovery Classic in 2018. And that's the one that started and ended in downtown. And it was a great event for the people that showed up. It just didn't have the reach that they had hoped that it was at the time with the staffing and the capacity that they had. So that's why we're, you know, building the team, you know, an event coordinator, bringing in an entire committee of people with the same business model of being eco-friendly. So we've talked to like all of our first responders and what is it, the community emergency response teams? Like they want like workshops for like first aid and stuff and like masseuses like for after the ride. So like they're really, like Jen's really thinking it through to take it like to the next level. But we really just need community support. Like we have a ton of ideas, but we just need more people to buy into it. We need experts that ride to say like, this is what it looks like. Like if we say, hey, after a ride, we want to dance, no, it's crazy. Nobody wants to do that after a ride. What do you guys want? You know, so I think we just need that feedback and those sounding boards of, you know, like people that we can go to for feedback and direction and advice in, in a way where it serves the community better, the riding community and the collective.
I was just gonna let you know that when you had it last year, I didn't forget as you had signed up, they did the first year and wanted to do it. Last year, this year, I guess.
Yeah, last year, there was some problems with Caltrans and we couldn't get them permitted.
There's a lot of people who were interested.
Yeah. Yeah.
We just need to have the reach go off much further because when they used to do this ride in like 2008, I mean, they would get anywhere from like up to 600 riders. Yeah, when they did it, it went out towards South County and like Kenpaw, they like, it had 600 riders. And I was just like, that's crazy, but we can do that. At least we should do it. Especially now with like digital marketing and social media, like we could totally. We just, we just have to put our collective heads together.
And let more people be aware that this event is going on. And it is gonna be a two-day event and it's moved locations to Pisinas Ranch, which is exactly where we need to be to really push the eco-friendly sustainability. And we're starting with some partnerships, but we really need to get in contact with some people in this area like specialized and bell and box and stuff like that. We have contacts that's just getting there and meeting with them and them having the time to meet. But we're gonna need your hotels.
Yeah.
We do not have enough hotels in Hollister and that's our downfall.
Yeah.
It would be great to form some partnerships and get maybe some of you that aren't beyond the committee for the Discovery Classic and put your input in there because we need people like you that are, that do this and love to do these rides to kind of tell us, no, don't do that. Do this instead.
Are you offering any type of campsites nearby as well?
So we do have some sites that, that do like glamping and the new ramp style. But we're also working with like Cusson de Pita and Balada Park because they do have RV parking and some camping. But there's this unused golf course on the east side of Caroline Highway going out towards Pisinas Ranch. And of course, I don't know if we would have enough time to do it, but it's an used property that's owned by Balada Park. So we're trying to figure out how we can take over that space, flatten it out, and give people the opportunity to put up a more intense, eight-rated.
Or RVs.
Yeah, or RVs. The hookups will be tricky, but Pisinas Ranch has like 18,000 acres. So they were like, you can use our property, like just where, what do you want to do with it? So like, and we don't, well, it depends, like how many people are we really able and trying to reach here? We put like capacity on it, but like do we have to? So every year, I think that's a, that's a conversation that we really want to start the dialogue and what are the needs? I think once we identify the needs, we can identify the solutions to fulfill those needs, for sure.
Sounds good.
And we think it's pretty price-Pointed, like maybe dollars.
That's small.
We searched around and we looked everywhere to kind of like hit right in the middle. Because we don't want to be too crowded anymore.
Especially to keep people in the area, like we want them to have the money in September to save us. So it's more, I mean, it's just another month on the season here. You know, we, we try and be mindful.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, I want to reiterate something that Chad mentioned that you might want to check out as far as the ride portion. If you want to see something in action, you might want to check out the Terrabella, how does it go ride, I believe it was every April or May. April.
It's going to be in April?
Right.
That would be awesome.
I, I don't necessarily think they're the best example, like from a business and commercial perspective, but as far as the ride part.
The ride is.
Would you guys see it advertising as well? The wires.
When you think stuff just like tag it.
Well, and, and most people do that, like even at Sea Otter, you'll come back on your, and your windshield will be the event for, that's two months later. And I think Terrabella usually starts and finishes at Gavelin College. Yeah, and I, I know one of the organizers, I can put them in contact with you and just, you can just do a friendly sort of, hey, can we, I'll, I'll promote yours, you promote mine, which is, is totally what you guys are trying to do.
Yeah, it's run by Almoda Cycle Touring Club. And I know the president as well, and he commented that he felt like their ridership was going down a little. So maybe you guys can learn some things from each other.
That would be awesome, yeah. So that's why we're elevating the event and creating this revamping and it's basically because we want to bring in your cyclists and make it like where you want to stay the whole weekend and have fun and make it an experience, not just in and out in one day. So. And that's all because we were talking to people from Sea Otter Classic.
Yeah.
Like make it an event.
Yep.
That drives the cyclists to your location. The more information you can tell us, the better. We are always open and we're willing to work with everybody and we love all the information we receive and the help. And, and I encourage all of you, if you want to be a part of the committee, to come on board and be a part of the Discovery Classic Committee.
Okay.
We're inviting you all.
All right.
An invitation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for driving up.
And thank you, Zachary, for inviting us here.
You're very welcome. Oh, nice going.
The first time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do like the logo. Yeah, it's a good logo.
We just revamped it all, so you saw our old logo, which is kind of like outdated. This is our new logo that'll be put onto our website and all our social media.
Nice. Thank you. So next up, we'll do ceremonial items, right? So I'll let Sean do all the introduction.
Sure. So, I'm sure you can come on up. We have our monthly Bicycle Pedestrian Commission award for someone who makes a difference in biking, walking, so I'll meet on the podium.
I'll meet you over there.
Okay, little background. I met Arnufo, well, not met, actually, I've known him a little bit for a long time, but through, or he went to middle school. I knew him intimately well from cross-country and track coaching. But he's a community member from San Ysidro Park. And that park didn't, he's done a very good reputation, but it's really been turned around the last handful of years. And there's been huge community effort to, to make that happen. But when you think of a park, especially a nice big one like that, and then you think of the new Lona Channel Trail that just opened, if you don't have people being active in the park, that's kind of sad. And that, that's kind of the, you know, brings, brings the heart of the park to the action there when you have people doing recreational things. So one thing that is still separate from what we're used to working on is Arnufo does a lot of soccer clinics and starts, kind of started a soccer program with that park that's on its own, a little separate from the recreational sports program that we have in Gilroy. So he stepped forward and took that off as a community member voluntarily. And then recently, when the Lona Channel Trail opened, he took upon himself to organize a fun run. And he made it pretty elaborate. He had different levels of runs for different ages and different abilities and made sure people were rewarded. He made sure for the kids around there that this was held around Halloween, right before Halloween celebrations. So made sure that it was really, well, decorated, really great event and got people from Gilroy High School cross-country team and coaches to come out, support that and, and learn even well. And it really made the ribbon cutting that we had there, opening the trail, an event because then we have a bunch of people there to use the trail and celebrate it. So we're honoring Arnufo tonight for his community efforts at San Ysidro Park.
You guys can come up right here to take a picture. As long as you share it with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, so let's see, back on, Carolyn, did you have anything you wanted to report? Okay. 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 So next up is the consent calendar. If I could get a motion to accept the consent calendar. One second. All in favor? Aye. All right, consent passes. Next up is item 8A, Safe Route to School Update, Commissioner Sean Reedy.
Some updates on some things happening in schools and then some more general things. There was a lot of investment put in by Public Health and different Gilroy dignitaries and employees with concern about Alexander Station opening up and how that would impact students getting to school at Elliott. I am following up with that situation now that enough people have moved in. I'm checking on how many people actually go to Elliott from that location. The principal told me definitely some have moved in that are doing that now. And so I'm gonna find out how many there are and if there's enough interest possibly in pursuing the walking school bus idea that we had there a long time ago, training community members on how to do that and get that started. Also, Elliott has a new principal and so we'll be making sure they get connected with, actually, the principal now is connected with CHP to get some educational events happening in the school. They've had concerns for a very long time about one of the intersections there by the school. And city's done what they can infrastructure-wise, but they really need to get the, you know, educational piece in there to make sure that the students and parents are walking safely and using the crosswalks properly. So that will be happening now. Luigi Apprea School will be on the radar in the future as far as sacred school task force because they have a new principal who's interested in educational items. But also with Antonio de Bono School closing, they will be receiving about two-thirds of those students. And so we'll bring up as a sacred school task force. How the students will be getting there, yeah, some of them will be bused probably, but some of them will not. And so the traffic will increase around the school and some people may be walking and biking from farther away than was the case before. So, and their school boundary was changed recently to, you know, match the situation that has happened. Those are the school updates. In a moment, Gary, or if you're ready now, if you have any comments about, well, you know, we'll save this for later. There's not much happening to schools because we need to keep working with Measure B to see what more might be happening besides the free stuff the CHP or GPD can provide. Gary, if you have any comment on this at this time. Health Department is able to offer to Gilroy a, if interested, we can do it in city limits. We can pick a location for a pop-up demo and the Public Health Department would pay for all the supplies needed, the training needed. All we would need is someone like an engineer, say like Neron, to spend a small amount of time that particular day at the event and possibly participate in a little bit of planning ahead of time. But, and then the evaluation would be taken care of by Public Health as well as far as evaluating whether the event made any difference or not. Advantage could be that with some of the grants out there, you're more competitive if you have a robust community effort such as that would provide. And it would be taken care of what the city just needs to provide a little bit of staff time from an engineer.
I'd have to understand a little bit more about what a little time is here and a little time there. I've got a staff that's extremely busy right now. We just had two or three projects added to our workload within the last several weeks. And I've got literally zero capacity. I've got some of my seniors right now working on a staff workload assessment to understand what can actually come off plates as compared to, as I'm working on other fires that are going on right now, sorry. So taking on another responsibility might be a little difficult. We will try to accommodate as best as possible because we understand the importance of this. So if you can get some additional details, I'll see what I can do.
Okay, I, I do plan to have the specific details of our estimates, but I don't have them tonight.
Unfortunately, I can't commit to it, but I can see what I can do.
And I understand your situation and I've made sure everybody is aware of that. I did not know of the extra details, but I, they're very clearly aware that the concern would be staff time and, and not, you know, not, no funding really wanting to spend up, but also especially just the staff time in general there. Anybody I've talked to that was asking me about this, I've been very clear with them about that.
Unfortunately, time is more of a commodity than money, right?
Exactly, right? Okay, so I'll get back to you when I have the precise estimates and we'll discuss further.
Yes, please.
Oh, Gary, you can get this to me later if you don't have it on top of your mind tonight. But Sacred to School ended up becoming an ongoing annual budget item and we're very pleased by that. But do you happen to recall the amount that is? I want to say it's in the realm of $25,000 to $30,000? Okay. I believe that's all I have on Sacred to School tonight, unless anybody else has something.
Anybody else on the commission have anything to add? Any members from the public that wish to comment? Do you want to wait until?
Just a general comment, if anybody's been out around the community lately, a couple of things. One, Gilroy Police Department got an OTS grant and I don't know if it's connected to that, but I really seen them doing a robust job of enforcement around the schools every morning. And sometimes it's not just one particular school. I've been around the five different ones on a particular morning and seen them, near all of them, making sure people are driving safely around the schools. And then also, there's a lot of new pavement and striping to celebrate around town, especially around schools because of the Sacred to School effort that's been made by Public Works in the last couple of years. And the amount that Gary's looking for, and I will help that continue. I don't actually need it right now, but I guess it'd be easier for the meeting than it records if you.
It's buried somewhere.
Okay. All right, so next up, we'll do the item 8B, General Plan Advisory Committee update, Commissioner Chad Reedy.
Yeah, so the next meeting is December 4th, November or October.
Okay. Anybody have anything to add? Any members from the public that wish to comment? All right, seeing none, thank you. Next up, 8C, Measure B, Education Encouragement. So this is kind of like a placeholder item on here. There's really nothing to review more than just sort of a couple of general updates that I'll provide. Myself and Sean Reedy had a meeting with Gabe Gonzalez, City Administrator, and informed him of what we were trying to advocate for before the city council meeting, where we gave our annual presentation. He appreciated that. He is aware of the work plans, he is aware of the funding agreement and everything that goes along with it. And he's pretty much told us that it needs to come back in February during the mid-year budget review. It's a pretty extensive program, pretty easy to manage, but. It's a pretty extensive program, pretty easy to manage, but it's a program nonetheless that needs to be inputted. And so that way it can actually be followed and not just sort of randomly be advocated every now and then. So that was really good to hear that that'll be coming back. I also met with Jimmy Forbes, the Finance Director, and kind of talked to him about what he felt about the funding agreement and if he felt that it was like difficult or easy to do, and he said it seemed pretty straightforward to him. And then looking at it too, especially when the city's able to submit invoices and get, and VTA promises to get it back within 30 days. For these amounts, the budget amounts being so small per year, I would assume that they're really trying to do that because quickly and efficiently, and if it takes any longer, it drags it out. Most cities are just going to not want to deal with it and just rather than try to budget that amount themselves. So yeah, those are basically the updates that I have that I have on that. Just looking forward to getting that in the mid-year budget review and we'll keep following up with the, with the city administrator on that. And like I said, we did present this to the city council and it was well received. Got a good couple of questions, get feedback back and forth. And that's all I have to update.
Again, through the chair, the last item, the Safe Crossed School was approved at $50,000. And that was an estimate based on the installation of approximately 20 crosswalks, 25 school signs and about 1,000 millimeter feet of striping and markings.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hill provided a really solid update about the possible, you know, funding that could possibly be used on sacred school and other education encouragement items. So we're not necessarily expecting any update from you Gary, especially given how much you said you have on your plate right now. But do you have any, any updates at this point?
With regards to?
In regards to like the measure B spending plan or template or education encouragement spending.
At this point, no, I do not.
Anybody else up here have anything to comment? Any guy? Okay, any members in the public that wish to comment? All right, seeing them. Next up is the item 8D, Pedestrian Safety Subcommittee, Commissioner Patrick Flub.
As previously discussed, I'm continuing to interview pedestrian safety subcommittee. As of now, there is one slot full of three. I plan on rebranding this effort next year with advertising and also working in San Diego County to get more people in these positions and to actually get this commission en route to getting data and getting results. As it stands right now, I know there's no one in the audience, unless there is one in the audience that wants to interview today for a position. If there is, we know now. Let's see, none. So I will hold off interviewing until next year as we have an agenda item that will be canceled next week.
Did you want to bring up right now too about the pedestrian crosswalk, the timers?
Yeah, I could, I was gonna say if I go overboard, but I might as well.
Well, just let's say it for then, because it'll work.
This one's for Gary.
That'll work out better.
So Gary, we got a question about crosswalk indicator and how those are set up to function. So this is the email that we got verbatim. I just checked the timers on the corner of Church and Woburn. Going north, the green man stays lit for about four to five seconds and eastbound is the same. Is it possible to show a descending number starting at say 15? I think we can all agree a number is much more informative for pedestrians and drivers than a blinking green man.
So we should have countdown signal heads or countdown timers at all of our locations. If we don't, then I should know and we can have a countdown timer installed. Perfect. So if you would let me know.
Church and Woburn.
And then what, what is the, what is the time that's supposed to be? Is it, is it 15 seconds or is it like, is there a standard? Does it totally matter on the intersection?
It depends on the distance.
On the distance?
It is. We could go into a whole description. Okay, it's, it's supposed to reflect the flashing time. So when you enter into the intersection typically with a white walking symbol.
Yeah.
And then it goes to flashing. When it would go to flashing, that's when it would start the countdown symbol or the numbers to designate when it's going to go then to the solid and then don't enter the intersection.
Okay.
And what it should be telling you is that that's the amount of time you have to actually then cross the intersection, which is a better indication as opposed to having just a flashing.
Right, right.
Red walk signal, people just don't see that.
So I'm curious, do you have some, some numbers that state how many of these crosswalk signals have that kind of technology?
Off the top of my head, no, but my goal is to have every intersection have pedestrian countdowns.
Nice.
Oh fantastic.
Well, we have, we have a new one for you. Yeah, we'll help you out, we'll give you that to you. Okay, great.
Just a comment in the general direction of that, it's my understanding, speaking with the engineer, Neron, that, you know, say for example, the intersection near Elroble School, Third Street and?
Ren.
And Ren. I think he mentioned to me that he was hoping to work in 2020 on a situation there where, you know, delay the ability for drivers to turn right on the red there.
So that's something we learned at Cal Bike from LADOT as one of their moves around schools is to, so like if I'm driving down Third Street and I want to make a right on Ren and I'm sitting here just waiting for the green light and all the pedestrians are waiting for their crosslight. And a lot of times people, you know, they just dart for it ahead of time. But so what they're doing is they're delaying the green light for them for like two seconds to let the group start ahead of time. Have you ever seen that move?
They're actually not delaying the red, they're starting the pedestrian phase early. So it's LPI lead pedestrian interval. So yes, we can certainly.
Do we have that kind of technology?
We do, absolutely. It's not us having the technology, it's the controllers having the ability to have that timed in. And yes, all of our 27 controllers have the ability to have LPI timed in. So yes, we could, that's something we could put into a work plan. If there's an interest in doing something like that, it would make sense to do. It does add delay to the timing of the cycle. So we'd have to look at the level of service of the intersection and see if it can be accommodated, which, so it's something we would have to, to do an analysis on anytime we want to do that.
Nice.
It makes sense for high pedestrian locations like downtown or around schools to consider that, especially where there's a high amount of pedestrians.
And can you, can you time it just to do that 15 minutes of walking and then it goes back? So you don't really mess up the level of service for 24 hours?
Yes, however, if you were to do that, it starts to get confusing to the pedestrians and the drivers. Because at certain times it works and certain times it's not doing that. If you're going to do that, then you want to do that all the time in a certain location. And you want to really start setting that as a common practice at all the intersections within a certain area, not just certain intersections. Because you want to start having drivers and pedestrians start to see a common practice and a common feature.
Yeah, so you become, you become aware, like, no, they always get a two second start.
Yeah, exactly. One intersection, okay, the pedestrian thinks that there is an LPI and so they do and then some they don't. It's, I'd rather do that than have signage that's restricting the right turn on red.
No, no, you actually explained it correctly, I explained it incorrectly.
We didn't know that.
I would hope that would be the case.
We knew there was something official. Yes, good job. Here, we have a bottle for you. An order. All right, does anybody have anything else to add for that? Okay. All right, item 8E is the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission Monthly Award Nomination. This is for everybody. Anybody have any, anybody they want to nominate for January? I have somebody in mind.
I think you have someone.
Want to do him now?
Yeah, I was gonna either think, yeah, Principal, you know, Scott Odison from Elroble, either January or February. I say we just do January, gives him time to put it on his calendar. So he's the principal at Elroble. He's, he's getting ready to retire and he's done a lot with Safe Crossed School, just biking in general. He was a big trooper and joining Avery and I on several bike trains with even Chad Sun Baden many times. Just a good all-around leader, very supportive when Silicon Valley Bicycle Association and Public Health were doing their, their programs as well. So it'd be fun to, to get him down here. And so that's who I would nominate.
I'm all for it.
Everybody sound good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right, so Scott Odison.
Just a general comment for the future is we've gotten some really great people on here in recent months. But I know our original intention was sometimes to try to get more young people.
Kids.
And I do have an idea that might be starting to be applied to some schools to help with that where safety patrol teams are actually involved in helping the walking rule days. When, especially at schools where there's low parent participation. So I've mentioned that's some principles, but it's not going yet.
Okay. Okay. Any members from the public that wish to comment? All right, seeing them. Next up is item 9A, this is the cancel of our December regular meeting. This is something that we normally do in November, unless anybody wants to be here on Christmas Eve. But no one's not going to be here, so if we could just, if there's any members in the public wish to comment, no one wants to force us to be here. So the possible action is motion to approve the cancel, canceling of our December 29th regular meeting.
I vote?
Yes. You do get a vote in this.
I'll make a motion to cancel on December 29th.
I say.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Aye. All right. Done. Item 9B, Asphalt Art Initiative Grant Program. So every, during the quarters when I can, I try to attend the Traffic Safety Community Network group up in San Jose. And, but I am on their email list and every now and then they throw out some pretty cool opportunities. So this is one that is kind of late, but nonetheless, it's an online grant application. It's something that we can definitely put on our strategic plan. As a matter of fact, I gotta write myself a note so we can remember for next year. Going through the grant, basically it is looking for populations between 30,000 and 500,000. The goal is improving street and pedestrian safety, revitalizing and beautifying underutilized public space, promoting collaboration and civic engagement in local communities. So that last portion, what they're talking about is that what they're looking for is, is, is kind of like a three-tier approach where you have, the, the city would be basically giving permission to do something like a crosswalk, a painted crosswalk, which is something that we talked about, maybe trying to do in the Monterey rehab section, but there was no funding for it. So this would be, it could be used as a crosswalk, it could be used, like, there's one picture in here where they actually did a mural on the side of a, looks like an elevated platform. They're looking for a fiscal sponsor to, which is a nonprofit, and that's where you can get into your community-based organizations. So another thing that we always try to do is not do everything on our own, but find a community-based organization that wants to do something like this. And then a local artist. So the city wouldn't be responsible for any staff time to, let's say, manage the grant or have to do any checks and balances or put the funds out. All they would do is basically, you know, obviously the, the ones that would permit the right of way to like paint a sidewalk, if that's, if that's what it is. I'm more than willing to do the grant. The Downtown Business Association is still, wants to do some sort of painting or like art project. And what they're, what they've always envisioned is, is using one of the crosswalks near downtown to make it basically a decorative crosswalk. There's a local artist down there named Nacho Moya, who's at the Moya Art Studio, who's willing to do it as the artist. And obviously majority of the money would go to that. I don't know, I'd have to look in deeper detail as far as like the grants, like whether it allocates so much funding for like a permit or whatever, but if, if, so what I'm looking for is, is a general consensus that's something that maybe we want to try to go after. Right now, the, it's due on December 2nd, I'm more than willing to just do, do the grant and see what happens. I think we got a good shot at it. We have a fiscal sponsor with the GDBA and we have a local artist. All we would need is just cooperation with the city and obviously every, and this is not something that would happen in January. I think that, I forget the day that they pick the winners, but this would be something obviously in springtime after the rainy season, I would assume.
How are the locations chosen?
I, I don't know.
I'm all for it.
Yeah, I think that it'd be something where we could bring it back here and get input from everybody here in the public and staff and be like, hey, here's a, you know, can we do something in this crosswalk? And, and maybe if the crosswalks are small enough, maybe we can do two of them in the downtown. What do you think?
I wish I had more time Monday to take a look at that and review it.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to, it doesn't hurt for me to fill out the, the grant and just even see if we even get it. It's like I said, there's, it, this is meant more for community-based organizations to take the lead. It's not meant for the city. And the city doesn't have to collect the money and, and then in return do, you know, the reviews after, because it is only $25,000 to $30,000.
I don't see a problem here, we should, we should at least apply.
I'm just looking at the, thinking of the maintenance responsibility and how that plays out long-term.
So it's not, it's not meant to, these are, it's not meant to be long-term, it's not meant to last forever.
Yeah, it lasts a few months.
Did you see it?
Yeah, just the proposed projects.
Duration, here we go.
Projects may be temporary lasting for just a few months or long-term or.
So, so we, we won't, we won't choose something that?
Do chalk.
Do chalk. We won't do something that'll last forever and that has to be maintained. That's, that wouldn't be the, the point of it. The point of it would just be like a, basically like a 12-month-long public art display.
So does that have to go through the art commission?
I have, I have sent it over to them too. Yeah, and I don't know, they just got combined. I didn't get any bites from any of them for a long time, so I honestly don't know. But no, it doesn't, it's not something that needs to go through them, but they are aware of it.
Who's the staff member of the art commission?
I don't know. Do you know?
Adam.
Adam, perfect. Adam Henning, the Park and Rec Commission, Staff liaison.
So it's something I can check with Adam on Monday. I can check with Adam on Monday, but it doesn't help if the application's due on Monday.
Yeah.
Get back to you on Monday.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Why don't you send me an email?
With the link to all this? Okay. All right. Yeah, any members in the public that wish to comment? Seeing them.
And then also kind of a scope of what you plan on applying for.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll do that. Gilroy Downtown Business Association, GDBA. Yeah, GDBA. Anybody else back up here? All right. Next up is correspondence. Does anybody have any questions about any of those? We'll continue on. I just, I want to highlight the California Bike License Plate Flyer. The DMV is trying to get, or I'm sorry, not the DMV, but they're trying to promote this. They need to get 7,500 prepaid applications in order for it to actually go through with DMV. This is all done by the California Department of Public Health. They have 12 months to collect the applications. The funding goes to physical activity funds, bike skill development and nutrition education at elementary school level and create safe places to ride throughout cycling, through cycling advocacy. And they will have grants too on funds that are collected. And there's a picture in our flyer of what the license plates look like. Next up is oral reports by commission members. Vice Chair Sean Reedy, I'll let you go first.
I don't have anything additional besides, I'm just noticing that we have included in the back of this packet a detailed example of something that happened in supporting Safe Crossed School lately at South Valley Middle School. And I've seen, I saw the enforcement of this play out. They updated the striping and signage to make the drop-off more safe for drivers, pedestrians, cyclists. And they announced how they wanted that to happen, made sure that got out to parents. And then the police were out there enforcing the date noted and I saw them there that week, making sure people knew what to do.
Commissioner Patrick Flub.
So a little while ago, I let this commission know that I formally applied to a position on Caltrans Advisory Committee. And I'm pleased to let everybody here know that the nominating committee for Santa Clara County, Joint Powers of Work of Caltrans, will be recommending me for appointment at three in the meeting on Thursday, December 5th at 9:00 AM. This is a nine-member committee encompassing most of the regions, all of the regions that Caltrans serves. I look forward to using this position to advocate for South County's needs with regards to Caltrans services and potential improvements. And also plan to bring back important, relevant information to this commission, either through an ongoing agenda item or during my future oral reports. That is all I have to say.
Congrats. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Lionel Gonzalez.
I just wanted to invite everyone tomorrow, not tomorrow, Thursday, to the, uh, to the chat. I'll hope we can get it right. Eight, eight, eight.
Thirty, yeah.
It starts at eight-thirty?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I, I, I've had my eye on that quick question. Um, is, is there anything that, that BPAC's ending up to do to be involved with that, or did that end up not?
So Zach, you probably have more information on that.
Yeah, so we're, we'll basically, I'll have a table out there and me and Avery, or she's gonna run some of it too, but, um, we'll just have a table out there to basically, you know, do sort of our final community engagement of the year, uh, event, and I'll have information, you know, on like just different projects and just general stuff to talk about. I'll also have some, you know, some swag to hand out as well. But basically just be there to, just to show support and, and to talk, but we're not gonna, we didn't take up one, like, one of the water stations or anything. We didn't do any of that. They have, they have that all filled out.
Is there any helmets being handed out?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll have a couple, I'll have like a couple helmets with me, and I got some, I have some sunglasses, some Safe Pressed School sunglasses and, um, some other stuff to, that I, that I can hand out. But what, but it, it's not gonna be, I didn't wanna, you know, especially for the weather and stuff like that, I didn't want to do too much more than that. Um, and, or to draw attention away from what we really are, we're, we're really there for is the run. Yeah, I didn't want to do the smoothie bike and I didn't want to do the spinning wheel and all that kind of stuff.
Oh. But yes.
But yeah, that, that, that's what they asked us to do is basically just, just to be there and for the, uh, just have a table next to their vendors and do some, do some talking and some.
Yeah. Shout out that was still.
So come join me.
Who's planning on attending?
Uh, I know I'm gonna be there.
Try to be there.
I'll try to be myself.
So come find me there. Uh, Commissioner Chad.
Real quick, jump back over to the sidewalk. Art project, I was just looking at the, you posted in our, in our notes, and it looks like the deadline's up as well. Be sure it's the second.
The, um.
It's really funky the way it's. We should launch the twenty-eighth of December, actually deadlines, and then there's now the spring twenty.
So, I don't know if I can get it in here in time, but.
It's alright.
It looked like the, it looked like the grant, uh, application was due. Yeah, no, I, I see that. So it looks like the, I, for some reason I thought that the actual grant deadline to submit was December second, and I don't know why that was in my head.
I gave Gary more time. So lost it.
He has a lot of time now. I think it's spring, right?
Alright, um.
Yeah, thank you. I'll look it over again.
Uh, we talked about, uh, I don't know if anybody's driven one fifty-two, one fifty-two, um, west of Gilroy has noticed what the state has done by cutting the trees back and, and rushing back all the debris off the road. Um, I'd like to suggest we can send a thank you to the state. I don't know if we talked about that. I don't know if they're. If you can just put that form out, our little thank you note, send it off to the state. Uh, also too, uh, Sean, I mentioned, uh, the fact that the paving, the striping on the roads is really nice. Uh, they're on Prince Val. On the chest of Prince Val, it's really nice to ride that every morning, right across the bridge, our bridge. Uh, but it is nice having that, making that a turn and having that, uh, striping there now as far as known, gives me a little protection on both directions. And then also too, a question on Ten Street Bridge, um, there's a section that says the, um, hawk, it's hawk lighting at, uh, ten and Orchard if necessary. I assume that if necessary means that if it's not done in this project that we're shooting for this summer, is that? It's necessary, we know that, right? It's just that the Ten Street project, if it's already installed, I assume that's, that's what the if necessary.
So the recommendation that was brought to council and approved by council last night? Yes, seems a faraway, um, was to install the signal if warranted and if not to install the hawk. And that was the recommendation of staff who was supported by the BPAC and confirmed by the council.
Yeah, so I'm trying, so you're saying if there's a signal there, then obviously that would be provided. Signalization, so no signalization provided, then a hawk would be provided.
Correct.
Okay, so something like, okay.
Cause there's that warrant analysis they have to do to see if a signal can even go in.
To see if a signal is.
You can't just choose.
Yeah, but right now there's currently a.
Rectangular rapid flash beacon that's in design, funded through our CIP, that's in design and scheduled to be installed, um, in spring or summer.
So that'll get installed regardless?
It's, it's scheduled to be installed. We don't have any money for anything associated with the project at all, with the Ten Street Bridge project. The, the number that I presented last night was twenty-seven million dollars. We don't have twenty-seven million dollars floating around. That twenty-seven million encompasses the bridge and all the components that I was gonna bring up in my update, um, including the signal improvements there, that intersection, and/or the hawk if the signal is not warranted. In lieu of that, and until we put in that signal and/or hawk, we're gonna be putting in our B in spring.
Sure, I understand. So we are that small project that's going forward, that has funding, we're good.
Absolutely. That was funded by CIP last year.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chad?
Nope.
Alright. Um, so here's a couple of my updates. Um, so the, the, that Hacker Pass corridor, Chad, I totally agree with you, and I'm, I'm on like a monthly sort of, uh, email loop with Assembly Member Rivas, but I, and I, I think they're doing a good job on their level, encouraging and getting updates and stuff like that, but I don't really want to send a thank you letter just yet. I, I think that we have a good working relationship and there's gonna be a lot going on, on that roadway over the next year, that, um, uh, I, I, I think we should wait, maybe even wait until.
For shoots though.
Uh, no, no, well, that, I think that'll be done before some of this other stuff, but it, maybe even wait before the roundabout gets in there and the bike pass, we can really formulate a good letter that talks about, thank you for, yeah, we, we've activated this area and you've made it look beautiful and, and pleasing. I, I think that it'd be better, I think it'd be better to come, come through that part.
Yep.
And I, I'll totally work with Assembly Member Rivas's office and maybe do like a joint letter or something like that. I think that would be nice.
Nice.
Okay, um, but I do agree with you that, that, uh.
I think it's awesome. I mean, I've written it so on my.
The, well, the, the, the tree that was down on Two Lane, uh, Two Oaks Lane and, and Hacker Pass finally got just taken out, the one that toppled over, so that was nice to see. Um, a couple other, uh, updates. The VTA Board voted eight to four. Um, despite what a couple of the, the committees had said to increase the importance, uh, of, uh, of service for communities of, of concern during their scoring for Measure B projects. Um, this is positive for Gilroy because we obviously are a community of concern. Um, so that, I was really happy to see that. Bay Area Air Management Quality District vouchers are gonna be available starting January twenty twenty for, um, for communities of concern. And so what AB four hundred does is, is allows, um, in the past, you could get, you could get rid of your clunker junker-like cars and, uh, turn them in for, you know, bus passes and stuff, and what Calbike, uh, did, um, is really advocate for people to be able to turn those cars in for e-bike vouchers. Um, so those are gonna start being available probably in January twenty twenty. Um, so we'll give some more information on that at the beginning of the year. Um, the, the Piazza, we've talked about converting one of their parking stalls into a, uh, into a bike corral. Um, we're still on board with doing that. One thing that I did find out is that, uh, you can't take a simple bike rack and, um, like we've done where we've placed them in the concrete, you can't put those in the asphalt because what happens in the summertime is if you get a, a single, uh, U-shaped, uh, um, bike rack in there like that, it'll, the asphalt will actually, uh, you could actually tip over the, um, the bike racks because the asphalt becomes soft. Um, so what they suggest is you put in basically what looks like more of like a rail system. And, um, so you can add, uh, six U inverted U's on a regular rail to take over like a nine-by-eighteen, um, parking spot. So I'm still working with them, um, and ho- hopefully that will be, uh, something I can talk to you guys about back in January. Um, we have a new community development director, name is Karen Garner. She starts, uh, I think next week, Monday. Um, so we do a lot of work with, with planning, and so I, what I'd like to do is basically just send a, a letter welcoming her, or giving her a little update on what we do, just a nice professional letter. Um, I'll bring that back in our January packet if, if everybody's okay with that, but I thought it'd be a nice sort of like welcome to the city. Um, I attended Garlic City BMX, uh, fundraiser for their dirt pump rack. Um, I also got to meet, um, with, uh, with Garlic City BMX and City Minister Gabe Gonzalez. Um, our next steps are choosing the actual specific location, uh, meeting the hundred fifty-foot setback from the creek. Um, we still, still are looking at Christmas Hill Park and, um, mainly trying to be over near where the Miller Red Barn is. Um, they still want to partner up and they still want to have that synergy, um, of family-friendly events. Um, so I'm looking forward to giving you guys a little bit more information on that. Um, and they were able to fundraise, I think she said almost thirty-five to four thousand dollars, just in one quick sort of let's all meet together. So that shows the need for that in the community big time. Um, the Levy Bike Bed Trail that we're gonna have the Turkey Trot on has new asphalt, um, and new packed running trails, which Chad always makes sure that they're, they're on those gravel trails. It looks awesome. It's, uh, from the sports park all the way to Miller Avenue. Um, so, uh, you know, that was really nice. That's something we played a part in back in two thousand seventeen where we had a special meeting during the day to approve a federal grant, um, for that funding. Um, and like Lionel says, want to let everybody know, come and join the BPAC, uh, probably our final community engagement event at the Turkey Trot for Los Madres of Gilroy, um, at the sports park on Thanksgiving morning. Um, uh, VTA Board and the VTA staff are right now looking at unused public spaces like their parking lots to build transit-oriented, uh, developments. Uh, VTA does own our train station in downtown Gilroy. And, um, one of the things that, uh, that they are looking at is, uh, obviously like car-free developments. Um, since it would be built in right next to the, the train station, so that's some, something that's coming up that, um, I'll probably be bringing more back to us in January on. Um, the Hillside Adventure Park in Gilroy Gardens, their master plan will probably end up being discussed at some point in a public meeting, a joint meeting with the Gilroy Garden Board and the, uh, City Council. Um, they had a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, December third, six PM here, but that got canceled. Um, so, uh, just loo- look for that. At some point they're gonna meet together and, and start having more open discussions about it. Um, and lastly, the GDBA, the Gilroy Downtown Business Association wants to incorporate a bike component to their downtown holiday, holiday parade. Like an ongoing one. I just got asked about it. I'm on duty this year, so I can't make it. Um, and I don't, I, it's, it's kind of short notice to put it upon anybody else to do it, but it's something that they want to, uh, do on an ongoing, regular basis. So it's something that maybe like in our October agenda, just to remember to start talking about it, but, um, they're not looking for anything more than, you know, the same thing we did for the Bonanza Day Parade where we just got, you know, a bunch of kids and, uh, and adults, but put some lights on the bike, kind of like the bike party. Um, and, uh, get out there and ride. And that is all I have. Next up is staff comments.
Okay, I have, uh, let's see, seven or eight things to talk about.
Hold on, Zach. We found that that's thirty-two.
Thank you. That's where I got the two from.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad.
So we've been busy over this last couple of weeks. Um, inter, uh, the NTMP, our Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, our traffic calming document, after several years of, uh, preparation and drafting, has finally been approved by our City Council, uh, a week ago last month. So we now have an approved traffic calming document for the city of Gilroy. Um, we have eighteen residents that are on the waiting list. We're gonna be outreach into those eighteen residents and, uh, starting to work with them in terms of their traffic calming requests. Document will be finalized and put on the city's website within the next couple of weeks. So we anticipate, uh, having a, um, number of requests starting to come in with regards to traffic calming requests. Uh, the Ten Street Bridge, uh, thank you again for the special meeting last week. Uh, that went to City Council in the study session last night. Uh, the results of that were, um, pretty similar for the most part with the recommendation of the bike commission. Um, I don't know if any of you watched that last night. It was a pretty extensive meeting. Uh, the final decision of the council was to go with the Wyatt Bridge, to go with the Breezeway Bridge, to go with the roundabout at Tenth and Uvas, to eliminate both of the drop-offs in front of Gilroy High School and to eliminate the roundabout at Orchard and Tenth. And also to ask our finance department to look at potential for bonding, uh, for the full cost of the construction of the project. And bring that back at a February timeline or a February meeting to, uh, present to council with regards to, um, selling bonds for revenue for that project to go ahead and build it. So we've been talking to them, uh, for a number of years about that project. The, the costs continued to escalate. And we presented to, to you folks last week and to the council was the cost of that bridge is now twenty-seven million when you look at the construction costs as well as all the soft costs associated with permitting, the environmental, et cetera. Uh, it was, you know, initially it a five to six million dollar bridge just for the bridge construction itself. It's now sitting at about seventeen to eighteen million. So the bridge cost has gone significantly, um, over the last seven to eight years, uh, as it's been considered. So the council is, has pretty much said, if we're gonna build it, it's not gonna get any cheaper, let's get it done. And so, uh, that was pretty exciting for staff. So, uh, it's another project that we're gonna be working on. We're providing direction to the designer to finish up the design and they're sixty-five percent design, we're moving forward on it, so that is back on the work plan. CIP projects, we're putting together our CIP program for this year. Uh, we're scheduled in February to go out to all of the different commissions, including this commission, to share our project lists. Um, I was just looking at the list as we were chatting earlier. There's sixty-five some odd just CIP project lists that engineering came up with, let alone projects, uh, in the storm section, street maintenance, uh, sewer groups, the water groups. So there, there's, you know, a hundred-plus projects that, uh, we're gonna be considering in this next budget cycle for capital projects. And so, um, so it's a significant amount of work that my staff is gonna be doing chartering all these projects over the next four to five weeks. Um, so we'll be presenting a lot of this information to the commissions in February. The Autumn Hacker Pass Roundabout, we were just talking about the improvements on Hacker Pass not too long ago and a lot of the work that Caltrans is doing. That, uh, the roundabout has been reviewed by the state for the last four to five years. Two weeks ago it got permitted, so it's finally now received its, its approval for construction. And will be scheduled for, uh, construction by Meritage, uh, starting in April. And so, uh, look for that to come into a neighborhood review. We've been asked by the Community Development Department to go out and spend some CD, CDBG money, uh, in the next several months. We have identified a sidewalk gap closure at Chestnut just south of Eighth. On the east side there, uh, is a location where there's a missing segment of sidewalk, so my staff is working right now to do some in-house design over the next several weeks to design that, so we can get that up to bid in January, uh, to complete that project. So we'll have, be able to, uh, complete that, kind of that missing length of sidewalk that's been missing for the last several years. So it's a kind of a anomaly out there on that Safe Pressed School for, uh, the school there, for Elliot School. So, uh, that's something I thought you guys would be interested in. The council met two weeks ago and talked about, uh, some discretionary money and was able to allocate one point two million to, uh, public works to go ahead and do the design and construction for the seventh and Nybergberry parking lot. That was something that we had in our CIP list of projects for this last cycle, uh, that was unfunded. So now we've received funding, so we'll be working in the next couple of weeks to get an RFP out for design, uh, so we can get that design going and get that, uh, construction going as soon as, early next year, hopefully. We'll make sure and put in not only vehicle parking, but have bicycle parking accommodated in there as well and make sure and share the information with the commission. This is at least the preliminary plans and preliminary cost estimating needed for this. Uh, not only included stormwater and stormwater treatment and full parking lot layout of landscaping, trees, full pedestrian sidewalk around it, uh, and pedestrian scale lighting throughout the entire parking lot as well. So it's, it's a fully developed parking lot, so stay tuned for that. The Monterey paving project is complete. One of the nice things we did as part of that project is took a lot of the dead space that was located at the, uh, corner bulbs and mid-block crosswalk bulbs and converted that to motorcycle parking. We're getting a lot of really good positive feedback from that. And so, not bicycle bicycle, but motorcycle.
No, it's awesome. It's too wild, man. Yeah.
So, yeah.
I saw people using it already.
That's something that's, that's pretty exciting, of course. That's, that's a sign. It's pretty exciting, of course, that's, that's a sign. So, I think at this point, uh, those are the things that we've been working on over these last several weeks.
Um, can you, can you briefly go over, remember about the, the sharos and the difference on like how you treat a street, a route and speed limit and when you use the difference of the signs?
So there's been some discussion about when and how we use sharos, so shared or, or shared lane markings are typically used on class three bike routes, and we're all familiar with class one, class two, class three bike facilities. Class one being off-street, um, separated pathways, uh, shared pathways, class two being striped bike lanes, class three being shared bike routes, uh, that typically are uh, street lanes or, or traffic lanes where the um, bicyclist is encouraged to use the full lane of traffic or at least uh, can use the full lane of traffic typically. In California, there's been a lot of discussion about how that's actually used, uh, previous practices did that. You just provide for a, a wide outside lane of traffic. So that outside lane is typically fifteen feet, and the bicyclist is encouraged to use the furthest limits of that outside lane, and the vehicle uses the inside lane. Over the last several years, there's been a movement where a new type of device has been used, a shared uh, lane marking or a shero where it's a couple Chevron's and a bike marking or a bike legend that is placed in the roadway to encourage bicyclists to not have to necessarily use the far right edge of the lane to get them out into the travel lane a little bit more, but also to remind motorists that bicyclists do have the right to use more than just the edge of the travel lane, and they, they can by California vehicles to actually use uh, the full travel lane, so um, it, it kinda serves, the shero serves two purposes, it encourages the bicyclist to, to use more of the travel lane and, and reminds motorists to expect bicyclists, so there's been the question of where to put the sharos, and I think that was your specific question. I know I went into a little bit of history and, and explanation about that, uh, maybe more than I should have, but um, typically, that shero should be in the center of the lane, it should not be offset from the center of the travel lane. Uh, if you're looking at a fifteen-foot outside lane, it should be the center of that twelve-foot lane, not the center of that fifteen-foot lane, so uh, the MUTCD has that, um, we did recently have a situation that you pointed out for us out on Monterey where we had gone ahead and uh, the, the developer, contractor, and the striper uh, had mismarked where those sharos were supposed to be marked. Uh, you would hot that, thank you for that, we, we'd actually got out there before, before inspector had got out there and checked the cat tracking, we were able to point that out before inspector. Inspector was able to get out there and see that, um, but uh, yeah, so we were able to remark that, and hopefully those are now out in the correct location. And so those, those uh, shared lane markings are out in the center of the lane. Uh, there's also the question about when to, what signage to use, is it um, share the road, or is it bicycles can use full lane? I think what we ended up landing on was bicycles can use full lane, because share the road isn't, isn't really clear. So, so again, it's, it's, it's educating not only the bicyclists, but moreover educating the vehicle, the driver what to expect and to remind them again that vehicle code allows the bicycles to use that full lane of traffic, so you know, in a situation in the downtown where we've got um, mixed vehicle and bicycle usage in an area where one can argue you might not wanna do that, especially with diagonal parking. You wanna get the, the bicyclist as far away from the diagonal parking as possible, you wanna get them out into the travel lane and away from cars backing out, especially if we don't have that back in angle parking. And so having those sharos out in the center of the lane with that signage to remind drivers to expect bicycles or anticipate bicycles using those lanes, and reminding them that they can use those lanes, I think is key and critical for those couple blocks where we have that situation.
So are we, so when we do a, a pavement and we put sharos down, is there always signage, or is signage an option?
Signage is not a requirement.
Not a.
The signage, uh, the signage that goes out is a, is a bike route signage, that's the typical signage. The only time you would add additional supplemental signage like we have there, uh, is where you would have a a, an orthodox or a, a, a unique shared configuration.
Like more reason for a conflict to happen.
Exactly, in this type of situation, uh, and to be honest, my opinion is we shouldn't have a a, a bike route in the middle of the downtown where we've got diagonal parking, unfortunately. The, the uh, Bike Master Plan, and the Bike Control Master Plan does have that as a bike route. When we redo the master plan, we can discuss whether that's feasible or not, or have it, or we should have a, an alternative parallel route like Eagleberry, as, as, as the route, and have appropriate signage directing traffic, bicycle traffic that might be coming down Monterey to go fifth to get over Eagleberry and direct them around the downtown and around that uh, diagonal parking area. Um, again, that's a conversation for a later time. Now though, what we have, and to deal with what we have is to uh, mixed use type of area that, that warrants the need for additional signage to remind drivers to watch for us.
Got it, thank you. Alright, um, and next up, uh, agenda items for next meeting. Um, the only standard one we usually have for January is to uh, pick a chair and vice chair, so remember to bring that back up. Um, Gary, if Neuron's available, or if you're available, I think it'd be really cool to highlight how many miles of total infrastructure you guys have put in over uh, maybe two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, we haven't talked about it in our annual presentation since two thousand seventeen, I think, and you guys have done a great job um, in, in adding infrastructure, and I think that number is, is pretty significant. Um, so maybe if we could just get that, that back, or some, something, I, I, I mean, you guys deserve a lot of credit for that.
We might be able to do something.
Yeah, just to summary of my, miles added versus two thousand seventeen to now.
Or even a just update aside in terms of what we did, accomplishments.
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then to be able to um, you know, put that uh, the updated bike map up. Um, it'd just be nice to see like a screenshot of what it was, you know, previously, and look what we've added, we've added off-street uh, class one trails, we've added bike routes, we've connected, you know, just different thing, I think it'd be a, a good chance for you guys to highlight everything that you guys have done. Um, we'll bring back the public fund balance sheet um, quarterly. Um, and then the only, only other thing I wanted to try to do is, um, so there's uh, our, the chief building official for City of Gilroy, his name's Hippolito. And um, he's, he's someone that was born and racer in, in Gilroy, and is actually raising his kids here, and he rode BMX here as well. And um, he's been a good liaison when it's, when it's come up to like what's required for bicycle parking. And this guy knows the codes for everything, and they just updated and um, uh, approved the twenty nineteen green building codes. Um, so I have a pretty good relationship with them, and I thought it'd be nice, at least if maybe you could just do a little quick write-up on like, if there's anything that's changed. Cause I know that conversation comes up a lot with us, when we look at developments, we're like, well, what is required, what can we, you know, sort of require, and, and uh, and also like we talked about last meeting, um, we do not have a multifamily housing bicycle parking ordinance, so there is no requirement for that. And that's something that I'd like to see us uh, get done next year. And uh, that's all I have for, for future agenda.
Um, just a comment on the things that uh, engineering can be showing that they've, they've accomplished. Uh, I, I'm working right now on a list, and Ron helped me get it done faster on the, the stuff that they've done around the schools. I'll, I'll have a list done by January.
Yeah, I, I think we need to highlight that, what, what, what you guys have done, it's, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot. Anything else for the future agenda? Alright, so uh, that's it, call the meeting to adjournment to the next regular meeting, which is January twenty eighth, twenty twenty at six PM. Happy, happy Thanksgiving and happy new.